Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Brandon Kritzman will lead us in the pledge.
Would you all rest?
My pledge is-
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Kritzman. We'd like to welcome you to the 1,878th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, August the 26th. Madam Clerk, we're gonna have one absent, and that is Councilman Barr will not be with us this evening, so if you would take the role on the other six.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Meakin?
Here.
Vice President Jolly?
Present.
President Toy?
Here.
We have a quorum. Now, we'd like to do the presentation of the minutes of the 1,877th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council, which was held on Monday, July the 22nd of this year. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the minutes.
Councilman Jolly has moved approval, supported by Councilwoman White. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, I'm going to go now to Councilman Kritzman for a presentation. Councilman Kritzman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a distinguished guest in the audience here this evening. I have the honor of thanking Mr. Craig Pastor for his 15 years of service to the Livonia Zoning Board of Appeals. Craig, if we could sneak you up to the microphone there, I'd like to read the certificate of commendation presented to Craig Pastor from the Livonia City Council. "The City Council of the City of Livonia commends Craig Pastor for his 15 years of service on the City of Livonia Zoning Board of Appeals. Craig Pastor was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals beginning July 12th, 2004, and has served through July 12th, 2019. He has attended over 270 meetings and has participated in the decision-making process of over 873 appeals that have included residential, commercial, and industrial petitions. He has also served as vice chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Livonia City Council commends and extends its appreciation on behalf of this community to you for your contributions and further extends its best wishes to you in the future."
Thank you.
And I can say, on behalf of council and myself personally, thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
Any words of wisdom you want to share with us up there?
Make the poor guy walk.
On his surgically repaired knee, we make him walk up front. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Looks like a practical typical.
Yeah.
May I add something?
Please do.
On Mr. Pastor's service to the city. I had the pleasure and the privilege of serving with him on zoning board for about a year and a half, and he always had interesting opinions. He knows so much about the city, about construction, about zoning, that he just, he added a lot, and it was always a lot of fun to serve with him, too. So Craig, thank you, and personally, thank you for always being supportive and helpful to me. All the best.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Meakin?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Craig for his years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I had the privilege of appointing Craig in 2004 to the zoning board. Craig, I don't know if you know, but he's in the construction business, and he travels quite a bit, sometimes driving 10 hours just to get to a zoning board meeting. So his efforts to get here were incredible, and we appreciate the effort you put in driving thousands of miles to get to a zoning board meeting, so we greatly appreciate all that you did. Your dedication to our signed ordinance was impeccable. We greatly appreciate eliminating many of the pole signs that were out there that were too high or too big, keeping us the well-signed community that we have always wanted. So thank you for all your service, Craig. It's been 15 years, and we'll find something else for you to do around the city.
Well, thank you so much.
And Craig, you and your family have been an intricate part of our city, and we do appreciate all the expertise you brought to the zoning board through the years, your dedication, and your chairmanship in some bumpy times here and there, so thank you very, very much. And many that served with you said what an excellent job you had done, so we appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Yes, anyone else wishing to? Nope. Well, thank you again. I'd like to share with the council and our community the passing of Bob Hardee's, and that was this morning, I believe. There's, and the services obviously have not been expressed yet. Bob, as many of you know, participated in the corn roast over, what is that, in September usually, or late fall, or?
The good old-fashioned community corn roast.
Yes, the good old-fashioned community corn roast. He was always very loving of his little cocker spaniel dog, and just did a great, great asset to this community, donated to many things, and most of all, wrote some historical kinds of pieces, pamphlets, and gave those to schoolchildren, and to the city, and many of our departments, and captured some history beyond what even Brian remembers. So we're just so privileged to have someone like Bob be part of our community, and his passing, if we could take a few moments of silence, council members to remember Bob. God bless you, Bob. Also, in our community, Mayor Wright, thank you very much, and Judy wrote this up today. We want to offer thanks, Mayor, to you and Brian Duggan, who I heard thought of this, about the movie mall, and what a fabulous thing. Last count, I heard something like 10,000 to 15,000 people, Mayor. If you could get up and share that with us. Major sponsors, Masco, thank you. Other sponsors, DMB, and council will be recognizing many of these on the 26th. Naval Paving, NYX, Fason and Bohm, Alpha USA, Livonia Spree, Site One, D and D Landscaping, DMB Landscaping, fabulous job, and so many others. Wade Shows, Aristio, Marcia McLennan Agency, Embassy Suites Hotel, Greg Coppola, Livonia Chamber of Commerce, OHM Advisors, Gulf Livonia, and 4M Associates. Honor guard from the American Leech 32, who stood guard 24 hours all weekend. Unbelievable. Mayor, I'm sure you can add to these, and amazing job.
You wouldn't think there'd be any more, but there still is a ton. We haven't been able to bring it up. It was quite the thing to see. The turnouts were just tremendous. Five to six, maybe 7,000 people at a time, and it just was, it was just great. Our volunteer force here jumped in and ran the show, and we had a lot of good things happen. We had a, just to give you an example, when they built this wall, it really, it knocks you kind of almost for a loop, because you don't understand the emotional part of it. As you go out, stand there and go through it, it changes. But we had a lady that had shown up, and she wanted to talk to one of us, and what her problem was, was she had, during the Vietnam War in the '60s and the '70s, she was at an airport and spit on one of the soldiers. And she felt so bad about this, it was bothering her for all these years. She felt she had to be here to make that amends, so, but it couldn't have gone any better. Everybody took their licks on this one, because it took a lot to pull it off, but we did it. In Livonia, we couldn't be any prouder of you for what you did.
That's right.
You did it right.
That's right. That was excellent, Mayor, and I heard you were a feature in one of the USO shows with Bob Hope and Jimmy Durante and Red Skelton.
There might be video.
Which one of you?
There could be.
I want the names of which one of you.
I heard it was a voluptuous woman named Marilyn Monroe, perhaps.
I had my eyes shut the whole time.
Okay, good, good. That's good. Well, thank you, sir. Wonderful job, and to your staff of Dave Varga, Linda McCann, and Ted Davis, and Joanna Hardissey, who chaired this event, Brian Duggan, Charlie Mahoney, Dan Spurling, Kristen, and I'm sure there's others, because I heard there was 400 volunteers.
Yeah.
It's amazing. What a feat to put together for, what was it, four days, right?
Yeah, yeah. They're leaving tonight, I think, but it was, it couldn't have gone any better. It really couldn't have. It was just a great job.
Thank you. You touched a lot of people. Thanks, Mayor. Anyone else? Yes. Oh, sorry, Kathleen.
I know that we get into trouble if we start thanking more individual people because so many people are involved, but I would like to give a special thank you to our former mayor, Jack Angerbretson, who is like Mayor Wright and other former mayor, Jack Kirksey, proud Air Force veteran, and worked on the committee that brought this here. So big thanks to Mayor Angerbretson, too.
Awesome.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
Just one other note, and again, I'm gonna reiterate what everyone else said. I hope folks in the audience had a chance to go by it. I have five daughters, and obviously, they're not going to be overly knowledgeable of that time period and the events, so it was a great learning opportunity for them. But, you know, you see over 58,000 names on a memorial wall like that, and you, without knowing someone, it's hard to be terribly personable, you know, personable about it. One of the things that really drove home the point I was trying to make in sharing this experience with my daughters is that the loss of life was scattered throughout the country, and you never really know where people were from. And there was a subtle thing that probably went unnoticed by a lot of folks, but there was a small flower basket in one spot with a handwritten note that said, "Arnie went to Franklin High and was from Livonia." And that was pretty neat. It was neat to see that, and I know we have the memorial at Five and Farmington. I recommend people go and check that out, because when you see the names of people from your own community who lost their lives in those wars, and then specifically this weekend with the Vietnam Memorial, it really changes things.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Yep. Okay, we're gonna introduce our department heads at this point, and to my right is Paul Bernier, our city attorney, and right next to him is Susan Nash, our city clerk, and across the way here is Todd Zalinsik. Todd is a city engineer, and next to him is Mark Teramina, and then Judy Preby, who is our legislative director, and Mark is our planning director as well. They do a fine job for us and really help us out, and we appreciate all they do. We have new data on item three, and now, council, we're gonna go to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any manner that's not on the green sheet, if you would please approach, put me my left or right, we would welcome your comments. I'm sorry? And we have three minutes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And Councilman Meakin will be the timer. Oh, hi.
Glenn Moon, 34461 Wood Street. "Lord God, in name Jesus, I pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, in name Jesus, in name your Lord God, in name Jesus, Son Jesus Christ, Lord, Savior, Messiah, I pray, seeking to be obedient to holy will of God, in name Jesus Christ, upon my human life. Abba, Father, in name Jesus, I pray. Through power, Holy Spirit, from God, in name Jesus Christ, give me spiritual truth from God, in name Jesus Christ, to share. Lead me, guide me, shine your Lord God, in name Jesus, light so bright before me, I must follow. I believe God, in name Jesus Christ. Lord God, in name Jesus, please have mercy on me. Thank you, Lord God, in name Jesus, I pray, to glory of God, in name Jesus, Christ, Lord, Savior, Messiah, I pray."
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Would anyone else like to have any comments to the council at this time? It's your time to share that with us. If not, we'll move into our agenda. Hearing and seeing no one, council, we'll move into reports from the mayor and other city officials. Communication from the Department of Finance, Madam Clerk, dated July 26th, on various financial statements of our city for the month in need, June 30th of this year. Please receive and file that. "Council, items 1 through 3 listed on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. This does not mean that they are any less important than any other items. They have been determined not to be controversial in nature." Is there anyone wishing to move those?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Just a quick point of clarification, since we've received new data on number 3, and it appears they're requesting to have one of the previously included conditions removed.
Okay.
Is that something that we should remove from the consent agenda? In fact, I'll make a motion to remove item 3 from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there other discussion at this point? If not, Madam Clerk, will you take the vote on that real quick?
We need a vote on that.
I think we can safely say yes.
So I think we make the agenda change to remove item 3, and then I'll make a motion to move the remainder of the consent agenda, less item 3.
Great, thank you. Councilman-
Support.
And supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to vote on item 1 and 2 on the consent. Okay, go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
That's items 1, 2.
We took 3 off, right?
Right, we took 3 off, but there's also items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Oh, that's unfinished business. It's unfinished business, Councilman.
Yeah, what she said.
It's okay.
Yeah, I missed the title on the second page.
It was confusing. It was, it was. Yes, go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. We will move to item 3 then. This is a waiver petition that does have new data. Councilman Kritzman, would you like to address that?
I guess at this point, I'd defer to Mr. Teramina to see if he had anything to-
Can we have a motion though on the floor?
Oh, I'll offer a motion for approval.
Do I have support on that, please?
Support.
Councilwoman White, as a supporter. Mr. Teramina, are you okay to address that?
I am. You know, I think what the petitioner has submitted is consistent with the review that was undertaken by the Plymouth Road Development Authority when it was discovered that a portion of the landscape plan along or within the right-of-way of Plymouth Road would interfere with the irrigation system. The PRDA recognized this, asked the petitioner to work with the city's or the PRDA's irrigation contractor, Tech 7, to see if there was a reasonable solution to this. I think the letter is, indicates the complications and the, you know, significant expense that would be associated with relocating the irrigation system, also the fact that this would be a very unique landscape feature along Plymouth Road. So it was something that I think the PRDA was, had recognized could be a challenge, and for that reason, I would recommend that we accept the findings of the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Teramina. Any others? Mr. Kritzman, before we leave there?
No.
Okay, anyone else? Do you have a motion of approving, I believe, with everything on the floor? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to address number 3? Hearing and seeing no one, will the clerk take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. "Council, we're under unfinished business. This is item 4, a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance number 543 as amended. This is brought to us from the Law Department. It's petition 2019050103. It's submitted by A and H Ventures LLC to rezone property located on the southwest corner of 6 Mile and Farmington Road in the northeast quarter of Section 16 from C1, local business, to C2, general business. A public hearing was held on July 15th. We need a first reading on this, please."
Madam Chair, I'd be glad to give that a first read.
Thank you. You've heard first reading from Councilwoman White. Item 5 then is a roll call, and this is a proposed amendment as well. This is a second reading, and who gave the second reading? Councilwoman White? Yes, go right ahead.
First reading, and I'd be happy to give that second reading.
Yes.
It's just a matter of some housekeeping to revise the stated location of Parkview Park.
Correct, thank you. Any questions or comments, council? Hearing and seeing no one, anyone from the audience on item 5? Hearing and seeing no one, Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. The ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Item 6, council, is a request approval to enter an agreement with Simple Recycling. This is brought to us from the Department of Public Works for a four-year agreement with an option to extend for an additional four years to provide services for a collection of soft recyclables. Council, your pleasure, your direction.
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'll offer the approval.
Support.
Councilman Meakin has offered approval, supported by Councilwoman White. Is there discussion from the council? Is there discussion from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Does somebody want to talk about what this is gonna do, maybe? Brian or Kathy? In regards to the soft goods for recyclables, a lot of the clothing, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Right, it will allow our residents to put at the curbside clothing and other items, material-type items, and we'll give an opportunity for those to be picked up by this company.
Yes. And that'll cut down on the landfill and things like that, so be ready, everyone, right? Go right ahead.
It's probably important to note, though, that the details in regards to how this will be accomplished will be forthcoming.
Correct.
Don't expect next week or this coming week for this to be something where you put your clothing and soft goods out at the curb and they magically become recycled and reused and that kind of stuff.
Good.
But look for the details in regards to how this will be accomplished in the communications from the city. Thank you.
And I think Vice President Jolly raises a good point. There are details forthcoming, and there'll be special bags for this. One of the advantages, and one of the things we hope to see from doing this, currently there are every week a fair number of textiles, clothing, rags placed in the recycling bins. Those items are not recyclable, so please do not put those in your bin and wait for the bags, and then you can put all of those things in the bags and put them out with your recycling. So thank you.
Correct. And it doesn't preclude you from also, you know, taking them to your local charity if you prefer to do that, too. It's just another way the city can be user-friendly in recycling and repurposing different items, and we want to thank the Sustainability Committee and all the fine work they did on this. Thank you very much. Jim Baringhouse and your group, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Okay, item 7 then, council, is a site plan. Petition from our planning commission. Do we have direction on this? This is for Schoolcraft College Health to construct a new four-story medical health services facility located on the east side of Hager Road between 6 Mile and 7 Mile roads in the southwest quarter of Section 7.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll offer an approving resolution on this item.
Support.
Councilman Kritzman has offered an approving. Councilwoman McIntyre has offered support. Councilman Meakin?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mark. Condition 10 is our normal thing that we have for light posts to be at 20 feet, but isn't this, their light post already at 30? So we're gonna match it to that height number?
Well, that was, the petitioner had requested the change from 20 to 30 to match what apparently they currently have on the campus, and that would be a deviation from what we normally require for commercial lighting height.
But wasn't that our intention is to allow them to go to 30?
I believe it was discussed at the study session. I didn't hear any objection to that, but I'll defer to the council on that.
Madam Chair?
I'll offer that as an amendment to my original resolution.
Okay. Is the secondor in favor? Yes, thank you.
And I just wanted to make that note, because unless we addressed that, we could have had a problem.
Good point, thank you. Any others? Yes?
Madam President? I want to take this opportunity and say that I think as a city, we enjoy a good partnership with Schoolcraft. It's something that's valued in our community. We had previously discussed at the study meeting the situation regarding the signage on the soccer dome on Schoolcraft's campus. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna object to this item before us here today because of that, but I do want to put on the record that I really, as I believe many of us would, like to have Schoolcraft work with us in regards to cleaning up that signage. It's something that we hear about a lot as elected officials in the city and people in City Hall hear about it as well. It's just, when you look at the totality of the development that's happened on Schoolcraft's campus, from its inception through today, you have a campus full of beautiful buildings that a lot of time and effort went into planning, and we, like I said, we appreciate it, but I think the signage there does not put our best face forward in regards to people passing by on 275 and the people who live around it. So I will put on the record once again, I'd appreciate if Schoolcraft would meet with us, meet with the administration in regards to talking about the signage on the soccer dome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Is there any others? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item, which is item 7? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Congratulations. Item 8 is a proposed special assessment for street lighting project. Department of Assessment has brought this to us for Heritage Square Site Condom, and it's located on the east side of Newburg Road and south of 6 Mile in the northwest quarter of Section 17. This is to establishment of the assessment role. The public hearing was held on July 17th of this year. Do I have direction?
Madam Chair, I'll offer the resolution which determines necessity.
Thank you. Councilwoman White has made an offer on this, and an approving then?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Meakin. Was there discussion? Hearing no council, give discussion to anyone from the audience. Hearing and seeing no one coming forth, Madam Clerk, will you take the vote on 8?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. "Council, we're on item 9, which is a waiver petition from our planning commission, petition 201904020, submitted by Ocean Wellness LLC, requesting waiver use approval to operate a massage establishment located on the west side of Middleburn Road between Puritan Avenue and 6 Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 14. And as you know, this petition was denied by the planning commission, and it comes to the city council per the petitioner's request for an appeal. The public hearing was held on July 15th of this year. Do I have direction from the council?"
Madam President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
I'll offer the approving resolution.
Councilman Meakin has offered an approving, supported by Councilwoman, um, McIntyre. Was there discussion, council? And from what I'm hearing, this is going to be more of a medical kind of massage and, uh, referrals and things like that, so that's great. And, um, is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this as well? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
No.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Congratulations. Item ten, where are we? Item ten, hold on a minute, butter fingers here, is under new business. A request to authorize an additional appropriation expenditure from our engineering division for the two thousand nineteen asphalt road program, Lathers Avenue from Curtis to Deering Avenue, drainage improvements for an additional thirty-six thousand ninety-eight point thirty-nine cents from the unexpendable fund balance from road, sidewalk, and tree fund. Um, council, your direction?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve his request.
Support.
Moved by Council Vice President Jolly, supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there discussion, council? Hearing and seeing no one. Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience. Would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly? President Toy?
Aye.
I interrupted his thought, I'm sorry.
I, I believe, uh, President Toy has seated the gavel to meet, so I will call item eleven. That's a request to refer the subject matter of food trucks and licensing under city ordinances to the committee of the hall. Uh, do we have direction?
Um, I will move an approving on that.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Meakin?
Any discussion from the council?
Yes, um, yes.
President Toy?
I would like to, um, review this, because we do have some stricter ordinances when it relates to food trucks. This came up back when I was on council, the second round, and I've had several people approve, um, approached me about food trucks, and I think their time has come to take a look at them and see what we can do, and I know that many of the department heads have looked at it, and our law department, and I appreciate all the work you've done. And I think we need to discuss it and come into the hall and, and bring that out and get it, get it on board for our city, and, uh, so that's why I bring it to you, council. Thank you very much for the indulgence.
Thank you, Madam President. Any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, is there any public communication, audience communication on this matter? Seeing no one approaching, I will ask the city clerk to call item eleven, the roll, please.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye. We have an approving resolution, sending the matter to the committee of the hall. And with that, I will return the gavel to President Toy.
Thank you, Vice President Jolly. Thank you, council. Um, we are under audience communication. That was our last item for the evening on our regular meeting. We do have another meeting in the eight o'clock, which is our study meeting. Um, was there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on any manner that wasn't before us on the green agenda?
Madam President.
Then we also have Councilwoman Meakin that would like to share.
Thank you. Since audience communication in the first part of the meeting was more of a somber and sad memorial-type period, I have a birthday wish for my daughter, and I waited for the second half to announce that one, since I have, well, the fewest, second fewest kids here. My daughter, Kellyanne, is turning twenty-three on the twenty-four, so I wanted to wish her a happy birthday.
Great. Happy birthday, Kellyanne. Very nice. I didn't know you were, had children that age. That's great. Okay.
Wow, another one.
Another one, yes, sir. Okay, was there anyone else wishing to go under audience communication? If not, happy birthday, Kellyanne.
I, I have...
Oh, Mr. Skip Neer.
It won't kill you.
Oh, wow.
Why take a chance?
It's a date without.
Hey, Skip, give us your name and address for the record.
Uh, Skip Neeran. The address is of our new house, which was my mother's old house, is one six eight five five Mayfield. I was under the impression there was going to be discussion about a waiver of the sidewalk requirement. When we first submitted the plans to the city, the person that was in charge at that time said, "We won't need to have sidewalk on there."
Excuse me, Madam President. Point of order. Sir, I hate to cut you off here. This is an item on the study agenda. We have two different meetings every night, unfortunately.
I was told it was at seven.
You're in the second meeting there.
Okay, I was told it was at seven, so I apologize.
Sorry about that, sir.
No, no, I'm sorry.
It's item seven. It's item seven on the next meeting.
Okay.
It's item seven. That may have been where you got a little, or somebody got confused, but thank you for being here. It's really good to...
That's quite all right. I will make a comment about the moving Vietnam wall. During Thursday and Friday, I was able to work sixteen hours, uh, reading names, helping out in the parking lot, and, uh, working the souvenir table, and we had people coming and paying attention. Every time that I rang that bell, I thought, "That's not a name on a piece of paper. That's somebody that never came home." And I thank everybody that was involved in bringing the wall. I've seen it before. I've been to Washington, D.C. I used to take my students from Fort Lee, Virginia, up to D.C. to see the wall, and the fact that it was in my city was a real point of pride for me, and I was happy to see a wonderful turnout.
Thank you, Mr. Neer.
So, I will, I will thank everybody on the committee that did it, and everyone that was involved.
And welcome home to you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jolly moved. Uh, Councilman Kritzman, I think you can safely show six. We are adjourned.